I want to say welcome and thank you all for being here. If any of you came in a little bit late, we did have the Stage Door Theater, the company, the high school company, perform, just to give you a little sneak preview of what they're going to be doing. It's a charity and they're going to be performing their performances incredibly in March. Punky Key is in the back at the trails table and she'll have discount tickets to the Stage Door Theater's presentation. So if you're interested, see Punky in the back. I want to say a special thanks to Marcy's Automotive and at Marcy for their community support of tonight's town hall meeting. So if you actually see their games, all of their contact information is on the bottom of the agenda, so please utilize those services. Our speakers tonight, and we have several of them, they've been asked to present just the facts and not to support or impose any development issues, political agenda, individual person, or business. So you'll be getting a lot of factual information tonight. There will be no questions or comments during the presentations. The presentations will be just an hour, so at about 8:00 we'll start our open house. At that point, you can ask all the questions you want, you're the presenters. And there's a lot of mount topics and everything that are here tonight with tickets, so some fun community events here coming up. So anyway, stick around at 8:00, we'll have a great open house. So what's going on around here? Anybody know? I think there's an awful lot. First of all, I'm going to have Jana come up and talk a little bit about what's happening with Seda, just give a little bit of an update.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Jana Spiker and I'm a Florida car transportation and a restful engineer for the region. Would you please come over this area? I was here at the last meeting here a couple of months ago and I just wanted to come and provide you an update to the project that we were talking about down at Shaker's. We were going, hopefully running to install this winter, the concrete median barrier down at Shaker's to prevent crossover from the southbound lanes into the northbound lane and vice versa. However, as we got into the design of that, we realized that drainage improvements would need to be made along with the median barrier improvement in order to not have any ponding or ice forming into the travel lanes. So with that, we are expecting our survey to be complete here in the next couple of weeks, which will tell us exactly what kind of drainage improvements we need to make. We are hoping to have that design completed this spring and the construction of that improvement will happen this summer. In addition, there is one other project going on down the road at Pine Junction that I wanted to inform you guys about. It's coming out of our traffic and operations group. It's a project that you will see here in the next couple of months where they will be reconfiguring the striping on the roadway to improve safety and operational improvements in that area. So at this time, that's the planned phase for the area. And if you have any information, I'll be over here.
Thank you, Jana. Great, great information. Okay. Next, we have Tina Frankholm and Tina is the new director up here for RTD. If you remember, we had Steph Millard for several years as our director and then Bruce Daly and now it's Tina. So she's going to give a little bit of an update about RTD.
And thank you for inviting me this evening. It's always my pleasure to come up to your area here. I live down south a little bit, in Littleton. But I am Tina Frankholm and I'm newly elected as your director for RTD for this district, district end. And you know, I can tell you, you know, I'm so excited about what's going on with RTD right now. And you know, in this period right now, we're all very excited because we have five projects underway, light rail projects underway, set to open in mid to late 2016, most notably the commuter rail going up to the airport. So as you think of things and if you know, if you have questions, I'll encourage you to call me or send me email. I've got some little red folders back here that will give you an update on FastTrax and my contact information, but I'm always happy to answer questions for you. So thank you so much and thank you for inviting me this evening.
Thank you, Tina. And now we have Melanie Swerengen, who is the fairly new now director of the Conifer Area Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Tonight I have three exciting events to tell you about that's coming up in our community. The first one is February 28th, we have the Mountainville Luge 2B competition and then also the Colorado's Taste over at Colorado's Best Beer. So check out our website, goconifer.com for more information on that. It'll be a lot of fun with the community. We have team competitions and family competitions, so all that information is online. We also have the annual awards coming up and we're going to celebrate some of the business leaders and our community leaders that really have made an impact on our community in the past year. So that is March 13th. Nominations are going in now, so be sure to log on to goconifer.com and get a nomination in for your best, favorite local business or favorite volunteer in the community. And then we also have our scholarship that I wanted to tell you all about. We have this year, two scholarships of $1,500 that we are going to be awarding to two seniors from Conifer High School that are in the business program there. And so that's exciting. Last year, I think we did one at 1,500 and the year before that was one at 1,000, excuse me. So we're very excited to be able to increase the number of kids we're able to support in also the dollar amount. So that is it for me. Thank you very much.
Chamber's always so busy doing so much. Okay, next we have Peter Bartman. He is now our Conifer Area Council advisor and he's going to give just a little bit of a brief update about the development updates.
Thank you, Shirley. Yeah, there are probably three important things that are coming up in the handout list, what's going on. There's the ongoing Conifer 285 Community Plan that Heather Rutherford is working on. She just had a meeting on the Activity Center for the Aspen Park Conifer Area and now she's scheduled one for the Pine Junction area. And that'll be March 3rd at Elk Creek Elementary School Cafeteria at 6:30 PM. I would suggest you go onto the website, look up the documents that are in there. She's got a lot of information, a lot of maps and she really is eagerly looking for people's input. And it looks like Lauren may have some of the maps in the back there. The other developments that are pending in everybody's mind, I'm sure, is the, there's a commercial development where there's a proposal to build 15,000 foot, square foot specialty retail in the vacant lot that's next to the Sonic. That's the Conifer Town Center, Block 2. We understand that's going to be, or it's intended to be a natural grocery store of sorts. However, what we're hearing from the county is that they're going to hold back approving anything for the Conifer Town Center until the owner and the water district make the improvements they need to make, two Main Street and the retaining wall. Nothing will get passed until those are taken care of. So it's a good impetus for the owner to do some work if he wants to get tenants into some of that land. So stay tuned for that. It's been going through the second referral, review and planning and zoning, but it'll probably stall until the improvements are made. The other one that we've all been hearing about in the, it's listed in here as Iowa Gulch Road, it's also been known as the Homestead Park ODP. And it's a proposal, this would actually downgrade the number of housing units from 26 to 22, but it includes a ski hill and sledding trails. This is next to the Homestead, you see it when you drive down 285. That one is also in its referrals, in the second referral, all the comments are in, they're being reviewed. A planning commission hearing has not been scheduled, but you'll want to pay attention and see when that happens. As soon as we hear, we'll post it on the website. The case manager for that is no longer Aaron DeClean, it's Russ Clark. So if you're interested, you might give Russ a call. I think what we all really need to pay attention to is whether they have a water plan that would allow them to do snowmaking, if that's really in their, in their crystal ball for that area. Being able to make snow, they would require a source of water, which if they're going to use local water, they'll need water rights for it and that's not an easy thing to do. But I think that's what people need to pay attention to, is what their proposal is on that. Again, it downgrades from 26 to 22 houses, so there are two ways to look at this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have Brian Mosby to talk about the Conifer Library. Brian?
Thank you. I'm Brian, I'm your friendly neighborhood librarian. So I brought a bunch of flyers along with different programs that were going on at the library, Storytime, the Library Club and things like that. But there's three in particular I'd like to point out that are going on. The first one, if you know any kids that have any reading skills whatsoever, they want to practice their reading skills, we have a PAWS program going on. And what that is, a volunteer comes into the library with her pet dog, Harvey, and the dog just lays there and listens to your channel read. It's a great, safe environment for kids to just practice their reading. So that's an excellent one. We do that the second and third Tuesdays each month at 4:00. Let's see here. With the help of Mount Resource Center, we brought a program, Active Parenting of Teens, to the library. It started last week. It is a six-week program. So if you're interested in parenting philosophy and skills and things like that, particularly with teenagers, that's going to be going on for the next five Thursdays, so into March as well. That's at 6:00 PM on those Thursdays. And it does build on itself, however, the first class, I'm sure you can catch up really well, and the teacher's great there. The other one is a system worldwide program. It's called Book a Librarian. It's through all the Jefferson County Public Libraries. And what it is, is if you need personalized research help, you can go onto our website, has the address there, and you can schedule a time with your very own librarian. And they will come to whatever library you pick at whatever time you agree upon and they can help you with any of your research or if you need help with technology or your personal devices or things like that. And they'll sit with you for 30 minutes and you get that personalized one-on-one attention. So the librarian's come to you now, alright? And then I have all sorts of other flyers over there too. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. And now we have our newly elected representative, John Kaiser. He's going to give a little bit of a legislative update.
Alright, thanks Shirley. How's everybody doing tonight? Thanks for coming out, being here and coming up. Yeah, well, we're already 25% of the way through the legislative session, if you can believe that, we're going fast. So this is the first time I've had the opportunity to talk to everyone since I've been sworn in, and again, my name's John Kaiser. And so thanks for electing me and I'm working hard down there to help make sure that our district is well represented. I'll share a couple of things with you that I'm working hard on right now and you know, there's about 600 bills that'll make their way through the legislature this year, 120 days. So it's kind of like drinking out of a fire hose a little bit. But a couple of things that I'm working on in coordination with Mountain Area Land Trust, we're working on a bill, I think it's going to really help us ensure we've got more access to open space and that will allow people to put their, put their land into trust and reduce transaction costs. It's kind of a, it's a legal change, it's a technical change, but really what it's going to do and really I think why Mountain Area Land Trust supports it very heavily is because it's going to really cut down on the costs for the landlord that wants to see their land put into open, into open space status and preserved for perpetuity. So second thing, pretty excited about too, is working on a statewide bill that's got a lot of support and it's pretty neat when you get urban legislators and mountain communities and people out in the eastern plains all agreeing on stuff. I'm optimistic, it's a bill that's dealing with having the state spend some more money on trails. And that's something that I think is really important here in our communities, supporting my family and to many of you as well. We know that we're kind of the playground really for the metro area. I kind of tease some of my colleagues from down in Denver because they always tell me how they come up, when they come up to Conifer, they come up to Morrison and Evergreen and you know, and they, they drive up, they bring their bikes, they ride around and then they go home. Anyway, they're using the trails and we want to make sure that they're helping us take care of them and that we can have more access as a community. But had a couple of great bills that have sailed through with unanimous support in the House so far, a couple of business bills. One actually was a, was a pretty interesting one that some of you will find a little bit humorous, hopefully. We have a lot of laws in Colorado, you know, it's enormous when you look at the statutes that we have. I uncovered a section of law that dealt with some antiquated licensing requirements on retailers and people who take an admission for entertainment, really grog. And said the county commissioners had to issue these licenses and it was like $5 essential license and if you didn't have one, you could be punishable by up to six months in jail. And it turned out, well, we did a lot of research and this is from the 1800s, not a single county was issuing these licenses, but it was still in the books. So we have a lot of potential violators of a law that, by the way, exempted purveyors of goods and sundries and mining tools and things like that. So some of that's clean up certainly. And another bill that I have that's already over in the Senate now is a, is a, I think a business friendly bill that is a clarification and a technical change to the merger statute we have in Colorado's corporate code, dealing with what happens when two businesses merge. And I think that'll wind up saving some, saving some lawsuits in the future. It's an issue that's been litigated heavily in a couple of other states. So that's something that, you know, I think is a common sense thing that we can do and I always like it when we have common sense things move through because you can tell what they are pretty easily by looking at quotes. You know, when you have two bills go through unanimously, as a freshman, I was very excited to see that happen. Those are over in the Senate and I think those will get approved by the Senate in short order. I want to just say thank you for, I know there's probably a number of people in this room who have reached out to me in email or calling the office down at the Capitol. I'll share with you that last week alone, I got 1,000 emails on just various bills that are going through the legislature. So if you are contacting me, I would ask you to make sure you put your name and let me know, you know, you're from Conifer, you know, if you're from House 25, it's important. You know, we get emails from all over the state and certainly with, you know, different software programs, people are able to, you know, email the entire legislature and just kind of fill people's inboxes. But I certainly commit to getting back to each of you, you know, when you reach out and email me. So if you do that, we'll definitely get back to you and I appreciate the, you know, always the communication and effort that so many of you put into watching what's going on down under the Capitol because it's, it moves fast, it does. Like I said, 600 bills will probably wind up being introduced and we'll work on all that stuff right now. But $22 billion state budget, so it's enormous. So if you have questions, if you want to just let me know how you feel, please do. Send me an email. Always some cards in the back. Unfortunately, I've got it at home. My wife's pregnant and she's, she's been really, I'm going to say it's really bad. I've got a dog that goes to bed all day, he was sick and I gotta go put my daughter in bed, but. Thanks for, thank you Shirley for having me. I appreciate it and look forward to seeing you guys again.
Thank you, Jana. Okay, next we have Josh List, who is the IRA public and regulatory director. He's going to talk about the role of traditional and renewable energy in today's power mix. So hopefully we can bring that up quickly here.
Good evening, everybody. As Shirley said, my name is Josh List. I'm the public and regulatory affairs director for Intermountain Rural Electric Association, your rural electric co-op. And I'm going to take a few minutes tonight just to talk about our current power mix and the present and future of traditional energy and renewable energy in our state, in our country and in IRA territory. Before I start, how many of you, when you flick on the light switch or turn on your microwave or any other electrical appliance, stop and think about, where does my power come from? How many of you think about it when the power goes out? Everybody, right? But not only where does it come from IRA, but where is the, how is the power actually generated? Can anybody in the audience tell me, just shout it out, where do you think most of our electricity in this country comes from?
Coal.
Coal. Boy, that was an easy one. And I will start by apologizing because some of these may be hard to see, but I'll go through them. Shirley has warned me and tasked me that I should talk about our power mix in a non-controversial way, which is a challenge in and of itself. How many of you have had an IRA representative speak or heard an IRA representative speak and maybe it was a little less non-controversial? Okay? I'm not that guy. Okay? We're just going to go over some of the basics on where our energy mix comes from in the country, in the state, and what we're looking at in the future. So yes, in the United States, 39% of our energy approximately comes from coal, 27% natural gas, nuclear is 19, hydro power is 7, other renewables 6, petroleum about 1%. In Colorado, coal is 64% approximately of our energy mix, natural gas 20%, wind 14, hydroelectric 2.4, solar less than 1% and geothermal almost doesn't register. But in total, as a country, 67% of our energy mix comes from fossil fuels. As a state, 84% of our energy mix comes from fossil fuels. That's coal, natural gas, petroleum. That's our current energy mix. And here's charts that are probably not any easier to see, that kind of breaks it down. But you see the large portion here, coal, natural gas, nuclear, renewables. Now, times they are changing. How many, is there anybody in the audience who has solar or participates in another renewable energy program? Excellent, excellent. We're seeing more and more of that in IRA's territory. Much of it is voluntary, but we're also seeing some regulation. Just briefly, some of the highlights, in 2010, the Colorado General Assembly enacted the Clean Air, Clean Jobs Act. It was the retirement or retrofit of over 900 megawatts capacity of coal-fired power plants into natural gas, calling also for an 80% reduction in nitrogen oxide. Clean Air, Clean Jobs was a big piece of legislation for the state of Colorado that had, has had impact on our state and continues to have an impact on our state. I'll move into that in a little bit. Next, Senate Bill 252 in 2013. How many of you are familiar with Senate Bill 252 and what it does? How many, how many of you read the Watson-Voltz? I'm a little biased, I helped write, I helped write Watson-Voltz. Read your Watson-Voltz, this can start. Senate Bill 252 said that for rural electric co-ops, there are over 100,000 meters in size, which basically is tri-state and IRA in Colorado. We need to have at least 20% of our energy come from renewable energy sources by the year 2020. The previous standard was 10%. Currently IRA is roughly around 13%. We fully anticipate that by 2020, we will meet this standard of 20%. Of that, 1% needs to be distributed generation. Can anybody tell me what distributed generation is? Okay. One of our board of directors is in the back of the chair. Distributed generation essentially is generation not from a power plant. It's distributed throughout the community, such as the solar panels on your home or solar garden, wind farm or wind generation, that sort of thing. So that's Senate Bill 252, another regulation that is pushing us in a particular direction as a state. And then this last summer, the Environmental Protection Agency proposed what they are calling the Clean Power Plan. What it essentially does is call for a 30% reduction in CO2 emissions by the year 2030 nationwide. This particular proposed rule calls for a state-by-state goal of CO2, carbon dioxide reductions, which we refer to in the industry as outside defense regulation. Its inside defense usually is EPA's purview and inside defense is plant by plant, power plant by power plant. Outside defense is now state by state. And it's saying, state by state, we're going to set goals for each state to reduce CO2 emissions. Now, a goal for Colorado in particular is around 35% reduction by the year 2030. The EPA proposed this rule in the summer of 2014 and the rule is set to be finalized in the summer of 2015. We've had several updates about it in our Watson-Voltz and I expect you'll see several more. It is evolving. They took public comment on the proposed regulation through last fall, through, I believe, December 1st. And the EPA is considering the literally millions of comments they got on this proposed regulation and we'll see the final product sometime this summer. But we're seeing state and federal regulations that are moving us in a particular direction towards more renewable, towards less emissions. And that is the trend that we are seeing. Now, IRA conducted a member survey last fall and it was a follow-up of a survey we conducted in 2011. We wanted to know what our members think. The survey covered a lot of areas, perception of IRA, our communications to our members, different technology, what technologies would be popular with our members in forms of what would they be likely to use and knowledge and perception of IRA's priorities. Regarding our energy mix specifically, we had our members or the participants in the survey rank the association goals. Number one was reliable electric service. Number two, low cost. Number three, fast customer service. Number four, energy efficiency or energy saving tips. Number five, renewable energy. Six, energy efficiency subsidies. Seven, home energy audits and eight charitable causes in the community. These are how the results came out. And then when we asked the participants, which of these goals you think is most important, 49% said keep costs as low as possible. Intermountain REA is a rural electric co-op, meaning we are not-for-profit. As members, I'm sure you all know, any of the margins that we get, our portions are returned back to our members as a not-for-profit co-op. 16% was the next highest with most reliable electric service. And then third, at 13%, using renewable energy sources. And it goes on, energy saving tips, fast customer service, home energy audits and so on. And then we asked further questions regarding how to pay for renewable energy. With regard to the use of renewable energy sources, do you generally prefer to A, pay a little more for electricity from renewable sources, or B, keep costs low by using traditional sources? 37% said pay a little more, whilst 63% said keep costs low by using traditional sources. Now, I see some of you shaking your heads. Is this a false choice? Maybe. It may be. But we asked further questions. In your opinion, should IRA provide rebates to encourage customers to purchase solar panels for their homes? Sixty-seven percent of respondents said yes. The co-op should provide subsidies or incentives for solar. Then we asked, is it a good idea for IRA to pay more for energy for customer-owned solar facilities than it pays for energy it can obtain otherwise? And the results were reversed. So sixty-seven percent said no, don't pay more for renewable. We don't want to pay more when you can get energy elsewhere. And here is the challenge that we're faced, as a, faced with, as a rural electric co-op, as a utility provider in general. We have, right now, our energy mix is roughly six, five to six percent is hydroelectric energy from the Western Area Power Authority. We owe maybe no quarter interest in the Ullis and Cleanis Coal Fired Power Plant in Colorado, Comanche Three, down in Buffalo, that provides roughly fifty percent of our energy mix. And the rest of our energy comes at a wholesale rate from Excel Energy. We are a purchaser of wholesale power. Our only generation interest is in part ownership of that power plant, otherwise we're a regular distribution co-op. Because we get our power so cheaply, and because we have enough power to meet the demands of our customers, adding additional generation, whatever that may be, could be extra cost. And I say could be because there are ways that we are looking at right now to add a utility-scale renewable energy to our energy mix that may come in at a reasonable cost comparison relative to the rest of our energy mix. But the point being, we all need to take that into account as a, as a co-op and as a utility in how we are, how we are stewards for our members' money in, in that we're not an investor-owned utility, we're not a for-profit company. But I thought the, the results of the survey were interesting. The other thing that I think that told us was, I think people generally responded to the survey would be more likely to install solar if there were rebates or incentives. But if those rebates or incentives cost them more as a member of the co-op, then maybe, maybe not. And one thing I will point out, we don't offer rebates, we never have. And it's because, as a member of a co-op, when you pay your utility bills, any costs we incur go to our customers. And if we're paying some customers extra for one thing, it falls on the backs of the other customers. And so we have to be mindful of that. Keeping in mind, as you saw before, the trends that we are going in and the direction we're going. Finding, finding balance is key. And I know I need to wrap up, I just got the limit. We need to find solutions that work on all the above energy strategy, using all of our resources and making sure that we're making sensible decisions that are not just based on costs, but not just based on ideology as well. We need to find that balance. And I think that's truly what we strive to do, what our board of directors strives to do. We have to always consider cost, of course. And resource planning for utility is a long-term endeavor. So I'm gonna end quickly with just three thoughts, or three plugs, I guess. One, we do offer free home energy audits. If any of you are interested, call our Sedalia office, we'll come to your house, set up a free energy audit, help you identify ways that we can, you can save money on your electric utility bill. Two, we are issuing capital credit refunds in March. Board of Directors has approved a thirteen point six million dollar refund this year. That's twenty, over twenty-nine million dollars that we've refunded since January of last year to our members. So I want to announce that, we'll see those in March, mostly in the form of a bill credit, there are exceptions. Read your next Watson-Voltz, it tells you all about it. And finally, I wanted to mention, Mike Kempy is one of our directors on the Board of Directors, represents part of this area up here, he's standing in the back in the blue shirt. He also works for the National Renewable Energy Laboratory in Golden, and is an expert on all things renewable and especially solar. So I'll be around if you have questions at the end, and certainly Michael as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Josh, very, very informative, that was great. Okay, next we have an update of the Project Place study. That was, you've heard about it if you've been to our meetings, it was the Conifer Recreation Coalition. And Mimi Mather is here. She is the principal with Root House, and that was the consultant that we worked with on that. There you go.
Hi, I'm Tiki Nemchek. And I have the honor of leading Project Place and representing our community. And while Mimi is setting that up, I'm sort of using time here, so bear with us just one second here. But I did want to thank you all for the support that we received from the community, from Jefferson County, from the commissioners and funding the master plan. And I sincerely hope that you really appreciate and enjoy what we have to present tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Tiki. So, a year ago, the Conifer Recreation Coalition launched Project Place, and I stood up here and asked for your involvement. Now, I'm excited to say a year later that the plan is done, and I'm here to ask you to give it a good read. I'm just gonna take the next couple of minutes to explain what's, what's in the plan, and hopefully whet your appetite so that you go home, download it, and rabbit- asleep devour it. So here it is, it's a strategy for improving recreation in the Conifer area. Throughout the project, we've emphasized this is not another recreation district project. Instead, it's really, it's a document, it's a guide. The, the plan is intended to be a roadmap that folks like yourself, that residents, that organizations, that civic leaders can use to try to improve recreation in the Conifer area. People might say, why didn't we do it? So the answer is really, why not? Recreation is fun, it's healthy, it's gonna improve the quality of life for those of you that call Conifer home. So what's inside the plan? There are a set of toolkits, there's four of them. One that looks at promoting Conifer's recreation opportunity, another one that looks at building a more robust trail system, a third one, improving outdoor recreation opportunities, and a fourth one looking at increasing the number of community gathering places. So the plan is chock full of checklists, of tips, of ideas from other communities. We've, we've borrowed, you might as well beg, borrow, and steal from others who have done things well in terms of promoting and increasing recreation in their communities, so we've done that. For example, there's a list of potential outdoor recreation events that, that somebody could, could run with here in the community. Another big question, when you do an ambitious, admittedly ambitious plan like this, we lay out a lot of ideas for the Conifer area, and it could take ten years to get it done. And a lot of question, or a common question people ask is, how are we gonna fund it? And funding is addressed in this plan, there's strategies for funding it. There's also long lists like this one of potential grant sources. And it's more than just a plan. The Conifer Recreation Coalition, in addition to this document, has also created a website devoted to Conifer recreation. So this is pretty cool, and again, I encourage you to log on, if not later this evening, how about this week? So what the, what the website includes is a list of recreation hotspots. So as, as part of the project, we asked you all at these town halls and other public meetings and through surveys, what do you like to do in Conifer, what are the best things to see and do outdoors? And from that input we received from you, we developed these recreation hotspot lists. So there's lists related to recreation destinations, to favorite trails, to annual events, and even to where to go for operating recreation libations. So again, lists that describe these, these different recreation destinations, and then links to Jefferson County Open Space and other places where you can get more detailed information from. The idea is these lists are just a beginning. The website has a place where you can contact Conifer Recreation Coalition and help us build those lists. Send your ideas, there might be a trail or an overlook that, that we didn't mention, we want to know about it. And then also on the website, you'll see that you can download the plan there. So again, I encourage you to do that. And that's, that's it. Again, a next step is really for you to take this document and run with it and improve recreation in the Conifer area. So thanks.
Thanks, Mimi. You know, Conifer Area Council has done three major surveys. I'm sure that most of you have, have, you know, taken those surveys. And we have found out over and over and over that trails and recreation are huge. You know, that's, that's one of the major things that people want to see improved. And so Conifer Area Council has, has worked with, with the Conifer Recreation Coalition, and a lot with Jefferson County Open Space to make sure that some things are happening. And here tonight, to tell us a little bit about some of the things that are happening, Tom Hoey, who is the Director of Parks and Open Space with Jefferson County Open Space, and Amy E. Tong, who is the Planning and Stewardship Manager for Jefferson County Open Space. And they're gonna talk about some of the things that we're working on up here. Tom?
Thanks, Shirley. Thanks for all for being here tonight, appreciate you having us. We've got lots of great things going on throughout the county, and in particular, this part of the county. So first thing I wanted to let you know, we were approached a while back by a club, a group, attempting to do some improvements at Conifer High School, asking the county if they would help sponsor a Great Outdoors Colorado grant. We did that because of the efforts of Club in raising lots of local dollars. We were able to get, I think, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars from VCO for that project. So, great work by the, the local group, Club, to get that lighting project done, and some other improvements to the sports fields there. Real quickly, I just wanted to tell you about something along the lines of what Shirley was just talking about. How many of you know about the North Fork Trail? Great, awesome. So we opened the North Fork Trail after spending about five years building it. It's about a nine-and-a-half mile long trail that connects Reynolds Park down to the South Plate. And just a little piece down the road, you can jump on the Colorado Trail, and you can get all the way over to Pine Valley Ranch Park in Pine Grove. So it's a tremendous addition to our trail system. If you haven't been out there, I highly recommend it. It probably doesn't hold very much snow because it's south-facing and it's got a lot of decompos granted on it. So it's probably a fairly winter-friendly trail. So let me just talk, the next topic is Journey Church. Conifer Area Council submitted a proposal to Jeffco Open Space for us to consider acquisition of that particular site. So let me talk real quickly about our proposal process. So actually, anyone can submit a proposal to us. A neighbor, the property owner themselves, an interested group, in this case, the Conifer Area Council. One of our staff members can propose it. So anybody can do that, and then we go through an evaluation process. We look at the land and compare it to, look at it in relation to our open space acquisition criteria. And that's a fairly thorough evaluation process, process that Amy and her group goes through. So that's a little bit about proposals. The second piece is that we have a couple of policies that guide and govern us. And when I say policies, I mean, think, these are, these are requirements that are adopted by the board of county commissioners. So one of them is that we only work with willing sellers. Another one is we only pay up to fair market value. And another one is that if something happens to be in the planning and zoning process, whether it's being brought forward for development or otherwise, we cannot engage with that property owner. That is the case with Journey Church currently. They have a zoning violation that basically takes us out of play until that zoning violation is resolved. Once that is resolved, we can engage in some discussions with them. So really, we're, we're kind of a, a holding place, waiting until that zoning violation is resolved. That said, I just didn't want to just point out that there were a couple of different reasons that Conifer Area Council suggested we look at this property. The first one is, can you use the pointer? The first one is to attempt to connect the high school to Flying J Ranch Park through this property. And you probably know that many students make that connection today, basically across private property. The high school being just at the bottom part of the map here. This is the, the actual Journey Church property and Flying J Ranch property. So that was one reason. The second reason was, it has a very large home that was built in the sixties, about five thousand square feet, that might serve as a community gathering place. And you heard Mimi talk about that a little bit earlier. And the third reason is that it has quite a nice meadow that is adjacent to Flying J Ranch Park across the highway from the Elbarn. So those are the attributes of the property that Conifer Area Council wanted us to take a look at. Again, we won't be able to take this any further than we have until the zoning violation is resolved. So that's Journey Church. I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about Beaver Ranch. Some years ago, ten or twelve years ago, Jefferson County Open Space purchased Beaver Ranch as a community park for the Conifer community, with the understanding that it would be operated by a nonprofit organization at no cost to the county. Beaver Ranch is a former camp, summer camp, has a lot of old buildings. And the board of directors, the nonprofit board of directors that had, had been operating Beaver Ranch for, for all these years have done a really good job cobbling things together. But they found themselves in this mode of continuing to try and sustain something that isn't all that sustainable. It's a lot of old buildings, they wind up bringing in a lot of uses that aren't necessarily community uses just to make ends meet. Renting cabins to folks that come up from Denver and so forth, which is great for the local economy, but we're just not really certain that that's serving the community need. We hear a lot of things anecdotally from the community that we would like it to be this, or we would like it to be that. So recently, as part of our local grant program, or nonprofit grant program, I should say, we awarded the Beaver Ranch Board a grant to do a very specific master plan, or site plan, for Beaver Ranch, with the understanding that there would be a lot of community engagement and input. So we get, so we get it right, so we really understand what you all want Beaver Ranch to be someday, how it will best serve you. And then, and then I think we can start putting the pieces together, using some of the, the work from Project Place that Mimi talked about, to start pulling together the resources to get whatever it is you want Beaver Ranch to be. I will just say this. Beaver Ranch is actually about the same size as Flying J Ranch. We wanted to just illustrate, the notion about Journey Church being a community gathering place, that's why we bought Beaver Ranch. And it's roughly the same distance from the, kind of the center of the Conifer area to Beaver Ranch as it is to the Journey Church site. So we're gonna want to look at that and consider that in both, both of the things that I just talked about, be it Journey Church as when that zoning violation comes, comes, is resolved, as well as Beaver Ranch master plan. So look for that, that'll be coming. We're hoping to work through that fairly expeditiously, that is, the Beaver Ranch plan, and have something in a year's time that we can start working on. So I want to turn it over to Amy, and she's gonna talk to you about another project we're doing.
Thanks, Tom. So, thanks for having us this evening. About a year ago, we adopted a ma- About a year ago, we adopted a master plan for specifically Jefferson County Open Space. And it lays out for us strategies for the next five years. So we're into year one of that. One of the things that we did is take a look at some of the water basins and some of the regions within the cabin. And we looked at four of them specifically. We have what we called a cafe, to actually talk about what partnerships are available, what might we do in various parts of the county. And one of the things that we found, thanks, Tom, is that what you see in a large pink block is actually a study that we had done for our master plan by a group called the Colorado Natural Heritage Program, identifying an area of one of the highest biodiversity for them within a potential conservation area, in the very southern part of the county before we interface with the U.S. Forest Service. So we've been looking at that, we've been talking to our partners about regions that we should focus on. We're so lucky that we have such a large county with so much rich wealth of opportunity for conservation, and yet we realized we needed to focus. And so with the recent conservation cafe, our determination was, we should focus in this southern area of the county. One of the things that you're going to find is that as we're starting to identify that area of focus, we were originally calling it kind of Deer Creek, which was near three of our large parks, Deer Creek, South Valley and Hildebrandt, near Chatfield. And as we looked more closely at that slide prior of the natural heritage opportunities, what we realized is the focus should really be in the area that we're showing there with the blocked out area, which really includes a lot of pine, it takes the southern part of Staunton State Park. It looks very closely at the interface with the Forest Service, with the Pike National Forest. Really incorporates a lot of local, state, federal agencies, partnerships. And for us, this is an opportunity to look big picture. Where are there regional trail corridors? Who can we partner with to leverage some amazing conservation efforts? Where are their habitat and wildlife movements? And so as you see, we've got arrows on the northern part of this conservation strategy network area, interfacing with the Conifer area. And that's why we're here presenting it this evening. There's so much work being done in the Conifer area. You've heard about a couple of things with Project Place, Beaver Ranch. Obviously, the Conifer Area Council is a huge advocate. What we want to do is interface closely as then we hone in more specifically on the area just south. So that was something we wanted to share with you. This will be a project that takes us multiple years. And it doesn't mean we won't focus in the rest of the county, but this is an area where we really see some incredible opportunities for this larger-scale opportunity for cooperation and networking. So we're here this evening, I've got the master plan, we can speak more about this. And thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Amy and Tom. We've worked a lot with Open Space, they've just been fantastic to work with. So thank you so much. Okay, next. Meyer Ranch House, the barn and the outbuildings. There's, we're just going to have Susie Morris with Chisholm, Conifer Historical Society So Susie Morris is going to talk, just give a little bit of an update about the Meyer Ranch property. And it looks like we have some Meyers here tonight. So we are so grateful for that.
There, we have Sharon, Cara, and Norm Jr. in the audience this evening, and they might be available for questions if you have any from them. So I am Susie Morris, President of the Conifer Historical Society. And I only have five minutes, so I'm going to fly through this. We're here tonight because I'd like to do an update for you of what we've called the Meyer Museum Project. We have a small board of dedicated board members and volunteers. And our mission has been to preserve, I'll shorten it, preserve and share the history of the Conifer area. And the property is now for sale. So here's, here's an overview of the entire property. Not sure if you can make out, I did, what I have here is, that's an overview of the entire property. And what's for sale is the area at the bottom of that map, which is a triangle, 10.6 acres. It has the Midway House, the garage, the McIntyre Barn, the hangar, sheds, and the Lubin Blakeslee Cabin, which was moved to that property about 10 years ago? So I'm going to give you a real quick history. There may not be anyone in this room that doesn't understand the historical significance of this property, but I'm just going to run through it really quickly. So in 1969, John McIntyre, who owned the estate of the property, had built a cabin, which is no longer there. The wood for the McIntyre Barn was cut in 1870. They, University of Arizona did a study on it. The McIntyre Barn is very significant. It's very early wooden pegged hand-built construction. And that's the McIntyre Barn. In 1874, the General Land Office granted the homestead to McIntyre. In 1882, Rambo bought the homestead. And in 1889, the Queen Anne-style farmhouse was built. And there's the Rambo building. Like they like to do, line up all their possessions out in the front yard, took a picture. So this is just to illustrate that, this is the first floor, the original first floor and the second floor. And that is just to illustrate that the house is, there's a lot of rooms and there are no large spaces for meetings and things like that. In 1912, the ranch and the midway house were sold to the Ralph Kirkpatrick family. And they had it until the 1940s. And during those war years, there were other owners. In 1950, Norm and Ethel Meyer purchased the ranch. And in 1959, they purchased an additional 140 acres of the Lubin property. And that's where, kind of where the Kane Super Shopping Center is. In 1990, the midway house was added to the National Register of Historic Places. In 2001, Norm signed a deed of conservation easement with Jefferson County Open Space. And I wanted to share with you, since the property's for sale, these are some of the prohibited uses. And I'll just go through this quickly because I can share this with you later if you're interested. So there's several prohibited uses and, you know, I think that would be a little bit of a concern for a museum and it outright eliminates a lot of commercial use, or any commercial use, actually. In 2010, we signed, the Conifer Historical Society signed a letter of agreement with Norm Sr. and his son, Norm, who's here tonight, to conduct a historic structure assessment and an economic feasibility study. And also, we had right of first refusal when the property is sold. And actually, Jefferson County Open Space has the first right of refusal, but apparently we didn't all know that when we were signing this letter. In 2011, we received a grant from the State Historic Fund to pay for the historic structure assessment of the property. In 2012, Jerome Associates presented the results of that historic structure assessment. It's a big binder, full of all the details on the structure assessment. In 2013, the State Historic Fund gave us another grant for a museum feasibility study. Now, let me flip ahead here because I... So what we have with the, whoops, go back. What we have is a small team of dedicated volunteers, as I said, and it's going to take a large committee. If the community is interested in purchasing this property, it's going to take quite a few people to work through all the details. I have made several calls to History Colorado and the State Historic Fund. There are multiple funding options for us, there are multiple grants, they can be combined. But it's going to take a lot of people to work through that. So is there a possibility to purchase the home? Yes. Is the Conifer Historical Society going to do that all by themselves? No. So, but we do have all the information and as I say, it's going to take a lot of people to make that happen. While we were working on, or finishing the feasibility study for Meyer Ranch, we were given the deed to the Little White Schoolhouse, also known as the Conifer Junction School. And this has been listed on county, state, and now the National Register of Historic Places. The Conifer Historical Society has been doing programs and exhibits since 2006. And these are many of them, quite a variety. And our next program is a free program on March 1st. It's a tribute to Norm Sr. So that, I think that covers it. Thank you, I really appreciate it.
I think everyone here agrees that Meyer Ranch property is just amazing. Coming down that hill into Conifer and seeing that yellow house is, it's special. So I think it's something that we, you know, really need to get behind if that's what we want to do. Well, I just want to thank all of the speakers tonight. They are sticking around, most of them, and they are here for questions, for comments. They've got displays, they've got brochures, they've got tickets. The Mountain Area Home and Garden Show is coming up in April, April 25th and 26th. So they've got tickets back there. The Rotary St. Patty's Party is March 14th, I believe. And there's tickets back there for that. As you know, the State Historic Theater is presenting sweet charity. And so Punky at the back table, the middle table back there has the $2 coupons if you would like to go see that. The Trails Table is right there where Punky is also. And our Trails team has just done amazing things. They've got maps back there, they can show you all the things I've done. So please go back and talk to them. Main Street Loop Project, we've got that started. And we would love to get volunteers to help with that. We talked a lot about that in our last meeting. You can talk to Lauren, who's in the orange shirt back here. She's also representing the Intermountain Humane Society. So you can talk to her about those two different things. There's a lot of other nonprofits and RTB and C-God and Open Space, Conifer Library and public, you know, Project Place. A lot of people here to talk to, so please do that. And I would like to again thank Marcy's Automotive for their community support of tonight's Conifer Area Council Town Hall meeting. And also Big Oak Tire actually has been bringing or purchasing the water for the meeting. So we would like to recognize them because that's, we all need water, I think, you know. Okay, so, and most of all, thank you all for coming and we hope to see you on April 15th, which is the next Town Hall meeting right here. Thank you very much.